For women and Planned Parenthood for sure.
Another cause highlighted this day, the Me Too Movement, taking a stand against sexual assault and harassment in the workplace. From movie mogul Harvey Weinstein to TV host Matt Lauer, allegations of misconduct have destroyed the careers of once powerful men in the media and in entertainment.
Men say that our movement makes them feel uncomfortable and paranoid. And to that I say, this movement is not about catering our voices to accommodate your comfort.
Maybe men can say and do whatever they want, but women cannot. The current system inhibits women from expressing our desires, wants, and needs.
Also everywhere were signs to dump Trump, himself accused of misbehavior by several women. Organizers had planned the marches as a get out and vote campaign for the upcoming midterm elections. Democrats have a shot at flipping Congress in November. Other issues, including immigration policy, hang in the balance.
And some might not like it, but look around you. Los Angeles is the face of the world today, and sorry, Mr. President, we're the face of this country tomorrow.
Reporting from downtown Civic Center, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Police reported no arrests and no major problems. Well, it's a water reclamation project that could change the way LA does water. The NoHo West remediation project will be the first of several to help generate more water for LA and lessen its dependence on imported water. Anna Marcos has more.
It's the state's second-largest underground water reservoir, but for decades, the water in the San Fernando Basin had been off limits to a dry and thirsty LA, until now. The city's NoHo West remediation project, now under construction, is about to change that by cleaning up the contamination left by industries during World War II.
The industries that brought us these great middle-class jobs and that brought us the technological advances that we enjoy today also left us with contaminated groundwater that has tainted our water supply for decades.
We are actually taking water that has been contaminated for a half a century and bringing it up to drinking water standards.
Right now, about 70% of all the water wells in the San Fernando Basin are contaminated, but this project will bring clean water to more than 35,000 families, and it's just one of several projects on the way.
We'll not just only be able to keep it here, we'll be able to drink it, we'll be able to use it, instead of it being stuck in polluted groundwater basins or washed out to the ocean. And that's a huge reengineering. I like to call it a second Mohoan moment.
NoHo West, a $92 million project, will be one of four water reclamation projects. It's set to be completed in 2020. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The city of LA plans to spend $600 million on these projects in the next four years. The money comes from a state water bond approved by voters. What can eyeglasses really help you learn? Well, educators are counting on it. A joint program by the LA Clippers Foundation, LAUSD, and the group Vision to Learn is giving out lots of free eyewear to LAUSD students. Anna Marcos has more.
Even Chuck, the LA Clippers mascot, is making a pitch for the four-eyed look. And the kids at this free eyeglass fitting at Fornoy Elementary are getting the idea: Glasses are cool.
At first, when I got my glasses, I was like, I was like very confused, but at the same time nervous, because I didn't know that I needed glasses. And then when I put them on, I looked out, I looked outside, I was very excited, but at the same time, mind blown. I was like, whoa, everything looks so different.
In fact, 200 students at this school, a whopping 30%, reportedly failed their eye exams. The story is similar throughout LAUSD, where 20% of students need glasses. And officials say many of their parents can't afford eyeglasses or exams.
In my class, it's hard for me to read the board. It makes me feel embarrassed, and then I have to walk up to the board to see it.
That's where this free eyeglass fitting comes in. The joint effort between the LA Clippers Foundation, LAUSD, and the nonprofit group Vision to Learn will bring free eye exams and eyeglasses to thousands of LA schoolchildren over the next two years.
But after today, I may have to go get some glasses, just so I can be as cool as all you will be when you got your glasses today.
And this is something that is very, very important. And when you hear the facts and you hear the amount of kids that this will affect and impact positively, it's kind of a no-brainer.
According to educators, 80% of children's learning throughout grade school is visual. So eyeglasses are more than just visual aids. They're a critical learning tool.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Thank you all for modeling, modeling how we get to 100% graduation. Help the kids see, let's make sure who needs glasses gets glasses.
Because just like eyeglasses are cool, so is a successful high school-graduated egghead. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The vision program will benefit LAUSD students from K through 12. In the 1980s, singer El DeBarge seemingly had it all, until addictions to painkillers and crack caught up to him. Now drug-free, the artist performed a show for others facing similar demons. Gil Reyes has more.
(SINGING) When it feels like the world is on your shoulders...
Three-time Grammy nominee El DeBarge entertained the crowd at Skid Row's Midnight Mission during this free, very personal concert. Patricia Bagley has every reason to dance.
I thank God for the Midnight Mission. Ever since I'll have 10 years clean and sober in May and my whole recovery, I've been coming to meetings at this place.
Next in line, get the camera ready.
Bagley has also been a huge fan of El DeBarge and his singing siblings since the mid-1980s, when the group's songs "Rhythm of the Night" and "Who's Holding Donna Now?" topped the charts, making them stars on MTV. But El DeBarge has also struggled with addiction. He spent more than a year in prison on drug charges, has been in and out of rehab, and is now making a serious effort to turn his life around.
So we all have our struggles. I'm not perfect, but I thank God, I'm not what I used to be. And I'm free from crack, believe that.
DeBarge contacted the Midnight Mission about performing the free show for others in recovery and facing homelessness. The mission hosts a music or art show almost every Thursday.
But I'll tell you, the musicians who come in say that this is the best audience they've ever had. And I believe that's true, because the folks here in our community don't take this for granted. They're so appreciative of anybody who's willing to come down and donate their time and talent in this really special way.
Thank you, y'all. Love y'all. Love y'all. Thank you, thank you.
Here's to second chances. On Skid Row, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The Midnight Mission provides crisis and bridge housing for those experiencing homelessness, also a drug and alcohol recovery program. The mission has been helping Angelenos get back on their feet since 1914. Well, they are known to be unique in the ape world, yet we're losing them by the thousands. Rasha Goel has more on how advocates are urging to help save orangutans.
Yana, I'm at the LA Zoo, where a special presentation was held on orangutans. Now, while we're fortunate enough to experience them here at the zoo, well, they do face extinction, and they had some important messages here for the public.
One of the key points I always try to make is, even though they're so much stronger than us and the mouths of canine such as like tigers, yeah? And we have killed maybe a million of them over the last few centuries, as we're slowly wiping species to extinction. And not one time in recorded history, not any zoo or any sanctuary in the wild, has orangutan ever killed a human being, yeah? They are far more noble creatures than we are.
Leif Cox, an orangutan conservationist and founder of the Orangutan Project, has spent the last three decades working to save orangutans from extinction. He shared his experiences and emphasized how important it is for humans to care about these animals.
We can't save orangutans unless people care and understand that these persons who share our planet, intelligent as a five, six-year-old child, have been driven to extinction for no good reason. And connecting with people with their stories and having compassion for them is part of the solution to saving.
Cox says the next few years are pivotal in turning this around to help save viable ecosystems, which will help orangutans survive into the future. There are primarily two species of orangutans, the Bornean and Sumatran. Orangutans are among the most intelligent primates. The LA Zoo is home to seven orangutans from the Bornean species.
People, I think, realize that primates are smart, but I don't know if they've realized to the extent to which orangutans can really problem-solve and how cognitively advanced they are. And then another thing is just how long-lived they are. And it's one of the problems facing them conservation-wise, is that they're a really long-lived species, and they don't breed very often. So females only have babies every seven to nine years.
Sadly, both species are considered to be critically endangered at this time.
Their forest home has been destroyed for unsustainable forms of agriculture, such as palm oil, pulp paper, and rubber, which do not benefit the economy or the long-term future of our planet.
It's the reason why getting the message out there has become a priority, and places such as the LA Zoo are pivotal.
The conservation threats that are behind many of these issues that are facing these species, zoos work really hard to not only support some of these initiatives, but also to educate the public on some of the problems that these animals are facing.
As we continue to learn from each other, hopes are to conserve a future where people live in harmony with nature. From the LA Zoo, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
City leaders celebrate the official grand opening of a new resource center. A free citizenship workshop offers help and advice for those seeking legal permanent status. And the LA Zoo welcomes an adorable new addition to the family. All these stories in City Beat. Councilmember Kern Price and county supervisor Mark Ridley Thomas were on hand for the official grand opening of the HOPIC Family Solution Center in South LA. The center brings together more than 10 nonprofit and government agencies and acts as a hub for a comprehensive range of services, including housing, jobs, and mental health and substance abuse treatments. Thanks to Measure H, the center has already helped thousands of families stay off the streets. The HOPIC Family Solution Center has been operating at this location since July and has helped more than 3,000 families so far.
They come in, if they have nowhere to go, we place them in housing, and then we enroll them into our housing intervention. So where we actually find a place for them to live, negotiate with landlords, negotiate rent, and actually pay rent or portions of rent for up to 12 months, and then help them stay in housing.
Councilman Kern Price, in partnership with Resource Center Cat Asen, also hosted a free citizenship and temporary protective status workshop at Manuel Arts High School. During the workshops, individuals obtained one-on-one advice on how to protect themselves and possibly gain legal permanent status. Temporary protected status is granted to countries facing devastating environmental disasters, civil war, or political instability. The humanitarian program protects individuals from deportation and allows them to live and work legally in the U.S. Councilmember Price has been a strong advocate and supporter of all immigrant rights.
Every time I hear him speak, he talks about such a strong community and that how separating people from their family really does affect the community as a whole. So we really appreciate his efforts and all of the support that he lends to the immigration community.
Another TPS workshop is being held on February 24 at the El Santo Nino Community Center at 601 East 23rd Street from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. To make an appointment, call 213-814-5248. The Los Angeles Zoo announced the birth of its first-ever female Okapi calf born at the zoo, a unique species often nicknamed the forest giraffe. The calf was born on November 10, 2017, and is the second offspring for 14-year-old mother Opie and the first for three-year-old father Jackson. The couple was paired together as part of an association of zoos and aquarium species survival plan program with the goal of increasing the Okapi population, which is rapidly declining in the wild. The currently unnamed calf spent the first couple of months behind the scenes bonding with her mother and familializing herself with her new home and the animal care staff. But guests can now view the female calf and her mother out in their habitat daily. Well, there's nothing like combining art and travel, and it's a perfect blend at Union Station. Rasha Goel has more.
With the vast array of diversity and cultural groups in the city, it's no surprise to be experiencing some tradition at Union Station. After all, why not enjoy some culture as you navigate through the city of angels? And for these performers, who are from a village in Belize called Huana Aragua, they say it's a way to keep their culture alive for those who are unable to go back home during the holiday season.
Besides being spiritual, it's a war dance. And that's one of the reasons you see the mask, you see the sword. If you look at the black, today we wear in black and white because it's a way we show that we mourn the past, year, welcome in the new year.
This is just one of the many events Metro Art has put on. Through the program, they present music, dance, poetry readings, and film screenings at Union Station.
Metro Art has been adding artistic and cultural events to Union Station for going on five years now, and it's part of a larger effort to make Union Station a cultural destination.
It's very important to transfer cultural practices and traditions to the next generation, because if I don't do it, I always tell myself, wait, who's gonna do it?
And it's a way to promote the visual arts while promoting ridership and connecting people throughout the city. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
For a list of other Metro Arts events, visit metro.net. Well, check out a collection of some of the biggest failures by some of the world's best-known companies. It's time for a tea party with the fairies, and Porsche fans, a new exhibit rolls into town that you won't want to miss. All this and this week's things to do. The Museum of Failure will treat its visitors to a shrine of history's epic fails by some of the world's best-known companies. First displayed in Sweden, the collection of 100-plus failures was originally conceived by psychologist and innovation researcher Dr. Samuel West as part of his research on corporate success and innovation. The marketing catastrophe that was big for her, yep. The two-wheeled self-balancing transport innovation segue, you better believe it. These, along with artifacts spanning from the 17th century right up to the present day, including the frozen beef lasagna by Colgate, demonstrate the types of failures the museum will showcase. Other highlights include the hula chair, the Apple Newton, and even President Donald Trump's version of Monopoly from 1989 made the cut. You won't want to miss the Museum of Failure on February 4, located at A&amp;D Architecture and Design Museum at 900 East 4th Street. A fairy tea party, such a lovely event. Each table will be hosted by one of a fairy hunt's charming fairies. English tea sandwiches, shortbread cookies, fairy fruit and veggies, and fairy tea will be served, catered by a fairy caterer. Come dressed in your fairy, prince or princess finest attire. Circle time, story time with the fairies, music, dancing, and surprises are all part of the fun. A Fairy Hunt's Fairy Tea Party takes place February 3 from 11:30 a.m. to 12:45 p.m. at the Tarzana Community and Cultural Center, located at 19130 Ventura Boulevard. For more, visit afairyhunt.com. Celebrating the worldwide impact of Porsche's legendary machines, the Peterson Automotive Museum presents the Porsche Effect. The new exhibit, organized in partnership with Porsche Cars North America and staged in the Mullin Grand Salon, will represent the most comprehensive Porsche display outside of Stuttgart. Museum guests will have a chance to see 50 of the brand's most iconic cars, both in the exhibition and in an all-new Porsche dedicated vault tour in the museum's underground treasury. The exhibit opens to the public on February 3 at the Peterson Museum. For more, visit Peterson.org. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from All of Us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
It all started that one day. I knew then, my destiny. To have a career where I can achieve my best, where every day is different, where lifelong friendships are made, where I'm saving lives, and inspiring others. My name is Mackenzie Vandergeest, and I am a Los Angeles firefighter.
Hi, I'm Gina Ray, and this is my dog, Whippet. We're from Winnetka. Get it, girl. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. This is our city and our channel.[1197.82]
Good morning, good morning. It is Friday, February 2nd. I want to welcome everyone to our Valley City Hall. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Blumenfield, Bonin, Buscayino, Sadio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Kocorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, ten members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Bonin moves. Blumenfield seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Rodriguez moves. Martinez seconds, next.
Mr. President, items one through three are items for which public hearings have been held.
Do you have cards? Oh, no, has been held. So why don't we prepare to vote on those items? I see no speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Continue.
Mr. President, items four through 12 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. I'm assuming you have cards on those items?
Yes, sir. As of this time, there are cards on six, seven, and 12.
Let's hold those...
And five, sir.
Let's hold those items and vote on the ones that are available to be voted on. So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That brings us where?
That brings counsel to the continuation agenda. Item number 13 is an item for which public hearing has been held. And as a... For the record, sir, there is a technical correction on this item. The correct time limit and last day for counsel action date is March 6, 2018, sir.
Okay, so let's vote on that as amended or as corrected. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That brings us where?
That brings counsel to items called special general public comment or presentation, sir.
Okay, so before we start today, I'd like to recognize Mr. Mitch O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, can you hear me? Are we on? Yesterday, a major tragedy was averted in the Westlake District when there was a gun that was brought to school by a 12-year-old girl on the campus of South Castro Middle School. Tragedy was averted because no one was gravely injured, even though it could have been a much different story. I just received a report from Deputy Chief in charge of the investigation that everyone's expected to make a full recovery. The boy that was the most seriously injured is in stable condition, and we think that everyone's going to emerge out of this with full recovery. Despite the fact that a whole community is traumatized, despite a panic-stricken moment yesterday, despite the fact that somehow firearms are making it into our public schools still, the LA Times reports today that in 2014-15 school year alone, due to random checks for firearms and weaponry, there were 800, some 800 weapons that were recovered, and that's with less than 10% of the students randomly checked. And out of that number, 15, 15 were firearms brought to LAUSD public schools. Now, at least, there are some protocols in place. I have every faith that these protocols will be improved after this incident at South Castro Middle School. But this begs the question for all of us as a society, is it okay that through random checks, 15 firearms still make it to public schools in Los Angeles on any given year? I think that incidents like this will motivate all of us to reflect more deeply on the power that the gun lobby has over modern society and legislators across the country, and what we can do, and where we're going to place our values in terms of getting a handle on gun safety legislation that doesn't, that makes it not okay that 15 firearms make their way onto LAUSD campuses. I don't fault administrators, I don't fault public safety personnel. There's plenty of blame to lay everywhere when things like this happen. But one thing is for sure, after a complete forensic investigation on where this gun came from, how this 12-year-old girl brought this gun to school, what it was doing in her backpack, after we can trace how that gun got to this school and which adult or adults are responsible that led this to happen, then we'll have something to work with in terms of taking a look at additional legislation. In Los Angeles, I'm very proud of the leadership that this counsel, Mr. Kocorian, and others in terms of the sensible gun safety legislation that we have enacted at the city level. The state of California is very progressive in gun safety legislation. But this incident yesterday should cause us to reflect even further on additional steps that may be able to be taken once we have the facts at hand. We're better than this as a society, we're better than this as a country. The NRA has no business telling us how to legislate across this great land. And at the local level, we probably can and will do more after yesterday's tragic incident. It could have been much worse. So we pray for all of those who are affected. The school is back up and running today, and I look forward to working with all of you with what we can find out and the action that we may be able to take after we have the facts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell, for that update. And it seemed like yesterday, everywhere you went, that that was the discussion that was taking place. Mr. Sadio?
Only to thank Mr. O'Farrell for his leadership on this, on this matter. We share the border. It's the high school my father went to when he came to Los Angeles, and it's about a block from my house where I live. And I want to also applaud Monica Garcia because she immediately did the outreach so that all of us could be kept abreast by the minute ahead of the media, ahead of the rumors about what was being done. I suggest we probably should have them come in, maybe LAPD and LAUSD, to give us a report on the protocols. And then we can have a conversation about how we could improve that environment so that young people could go to school to learn.
You know, that's an excellent idea, and would be very informative, not just for this body, but the public as well. So maybe we should figure out how to make that occur. Okay, then. Since we are in the presentation portion of today's agenda, I'd like to recognize Mr. Blumenfield.
Colleagues, today, giving a presentation for a very special person. Someone who has been on the neighborhood, who's served as president of the Neighborhood Council five consecutive years.
Mr. Blumenfield, let me jump in. Hey, guys, let's get a little balance. Let's get some people on to my right.
So we move over a little bit so we get a nice... You can see, she always, she always comes with a, with a posse of people, and all of whom have great meaning in her life and in our community. And she'll talk a little bit about that. But Corinne is someone I have had the pleasure of knowing for many years now. She is somebody who personifies civic engagement. She is someone who, especially in Canoga Park, her influence is everywhere. Everywhere you go in Canoga Park, you can, you can see her active, you can see projects that she's worked on. And when I say civic engagement, this is coming from someone who became a naturalized citizen, what, six months ago, July 17? But that's not when she started. She didn't wait to become a naturalized citizen. She has been active for years in this community. And as I said, really personifies a civically engaged great Angelino. She's a person who was born and raised in Madagascar. She lived in Paris, Montreal. She immigrated with her husband to America in 1998, and for seven years has not just been living in Canoga Park, but has been shaping it. She's someone who speaks probably more languages than any of us here. She speaks five languages fluently: Spanish, English, Italian, French, and Malagasy, which is the, the language of, one of the languages of Madagascar. Of Chinese descent, is just an amazing Angelino. Her daughter's the same age as my daughter, and their friends, Jasmine and her husband Ben, are wonderful people. As I said, she served on the Neighborhood Council for five consecutive years. She led that council to, to a more prominent functioning, accomplishing all sorts of things. They did many beautification projects. It is, it is not unusual, when I'm, you know, doing a beautification project in Canoga Park especially, that she's a part of it. Or if I'm just driving around, I see her all of a sudden out there with people doing these projects. She gets her hands dirty making things happen. While president of the Neighborhood Council, they targeted community engagement. Their increased, they did increased voter turnout, and turned out for the Neighborhood Council more, increased it more than 300%, getting other people involved. And she not only did that, but established relationships with other Neighborhood Councils so that it wasn't just limited to her area. She's really been influencing the whole city and governance in general. She's a member of the League of Women Voters, where she does voter registration, voter education, participated in legislative interviews. She was a moderator for political candidates. I'm going to tell you just some of the things she gets involved with. It's all over the place, but it's all making our community better. She co-organized forums on human trafficking awareness, and she's been a member of the Community Policing Committee, has taken that issue on just so passionately, and she's making a difference. She's a member of the LAPD Topanga Division Community Police Advisory Board. She's a member of the Asian Pacific Human Trafficking Task Force. She's a member of the Mayor's Crisis Response Team, which is not just something you, you sign up for, but you undergo extensive training in crisis care intervention, working with city departments, being on call to respond to events in the city, doing emergency responses to homicides, suicides, domestic violence issues, officer-involved shootings, all sorts of things. She also volunteers, I don't know how she finds time, once a month at the women's prison, translating and interpreting for domestic violence works for their department. And in addition to that, she's still as active as a, as a member, serving on the Neighborhood Council, co-chairing two of the committees. Even though she wanted to step down from the presidency, nobody wanted to let her go. So she finally was able to step down from the presidency, but they nabbed her into these two committees, and you're still doing more work than, than, than everybody combined in the city. So I am just amazed at the energy and the accomplishments of my friend Corinne. And I wanted to, to be here and to acknowledge that, especially for your work in the Neighborhood Council with a certificate. But I'm not going to give it to you quite yet. I just wanted to show it to you and all the folks here. And I wanted to give you a chance to say a few words as well, if that's okay, Mr. President.
Of course, that's okay. But before you come to the mic, Corinne, I just want to say that I've had an opportunity to get to know her over the past year, year and a half, and, and I echo everything that Bob said. I think if there's an example of what can happen to individuals that really want to come to this country, that you're, you're like you said, from Madagascar to Paris to Canada here, just recently becoming a citizen of this great country, but working so hard much earlier than that. I had the opportunity to visit the Neighborhood Council when she was the president, and she was real strict, ran a good meeting. I was very impressed. The people were very engaged. So as a friend of yours, I just want to say that congratulations. Thank you for all of the work that you've done, and you are a perfect example of what makes this country the greatest country on the planet. So with that said, the floor is yours, Ms. Hope. Let's give Corinne a round of applause.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, Councilmember. Mr. Blumenfield, I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you to the City of Los Angeles for this moment, this morning. I apologize, I'm getting emotional. It is a big deal, as we say in American vernacular, for a girl from Madagascar to have done all this. I got here by accident. Someone by the name of Michael Sirota in the community pushed me in the Neighborhood Council. I didn't know what it was. I wanted to quit when the election came. I said I didn't sign up for this. This is not what I, this is not what I want to do. But I stuck in there, and the Neighborhood Council has been the greatest learning experience in civic engagement. It is the most valuable tool, and if I could be of service of Los Angeles, to the City of Los Angeles, it is my pleasure, it is my honor and a privilege to do so. And I am here today with members in the community, with the nuns from my Buddhist temple, and my friend Jimmy, the League of Women Voters, Jean Thompson and Rosemary Enzner, and the Sikh, my friends at the Sikh community who have been helping through a lot of the projects, and Felipe Sklar, that, with who I go to visit the women's prison once a month, Gary Fordyce, very engaged in the Neighborhood Council system as well. So again, thank you so much. Thank you to Jenny for her assistance to Canoga Park. And on behalf of the community of Canoga Park, thank you very much, Mr. Blumenfield. This is an honor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please accept this small token of appreciation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'd now like to recognize Ms. Rodriguez and Mr. Kocorian, and make a request that Mr. Englander...
Good morning, colleagues. Well, I am very delighted to be participating and leading this, this presentation this morning with some very great friends in both the Armenian and the Mexican communities. You know, it's no secret how diverse Los Angeles is. In fact, we pride ourselves on it. But I think what's especially great about Los Angeles is that we do such an outstanding job of really bridging the cultural divides amongst our different communities. And this is one of the most special examples of that. This morning, I am joined by the Ambassador of the Republic of Armenia to, to the United States, Grigor Jovhanisian. Okay, thank you. I've worked on that. My very dear friend, the Consul General of Mexico to Los Angeles, Carlos Garcia de Alba, my colleague on the Los Angeles City Council, Mr. Paul Kocorian, and special, special thanks to our Community Affairs Council, the, on the consulate, for the consulate, the General of the Republic of Armenia in Los Angeles and their members, Harut Semerjyan, who is the chair, Ana Menajian, who is a member of this great committee, Aras Parshigian, also a constituent of mine and very dear friend, Varam Martis... I'm going to get this, guys. Martir Rosian. I, you know, it's one of those things with Armenian pronunciation, I really like to use my, my Latino roots in that. So it's kind of that hybrid, right? We try to keep it real. Arpin Shadkamanyan, Sarin Abrahamanyan, Abrimian, and of course, Christine Jerian, who is also my Deputy Chief of Staff. This week is about promoting this cross-cultural dialogue, and is truly what is special about who we are here in Los Angeles, when we have generations of Armenians and Mexican-Americans that have helped to shape the cultural economy and community through their leadership, through business, through academia. And, you know, I have an incredible example of this great fusion of both Armenian and Mexican roots. And it's in my district, not far from my Paco Mafield office, and it's Antonio's Tacos and Kebabs, which is the greatest example infusion of Mexican and Armenian cuisine. And I think there's no better reflection of how we can work collectively and collaboratively to produce such incredible flavor to Los Angeles through, through our food and our music. My district is home to one of the largest and emerging populations of Armenian constituencies, as is the Latino community. So I think it's very fitting that I'm here, joined by my colleague, Councilmember Paul Kocorian, to help kick off this very special cultural week. And so I'd like to invite Councilmember Kocorian for some, his remarks.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Rodriguez. And thank you for, for bringing us together. You know, many people don't realize that the two most commonly spoken languages after English in the City of Los Angeles, the San Fernando Valley, excuse me, are Spanish and Armenian. And in the east San Fernando Valley, the two largest ethnic groups are Armenians and Latin Ameri, Latino-Americans, and particularly...
Latino-Americans, and particularly Mexican-Americans. So it's only natural that we would make this effort to try to bring these communities together, and I really want to applaud the two consulates for having taken the lead in doing so. And it's natural, because these communities have so much in common. They're largely immigrant groups who have a strong commitment to retaining their traditional cultures, to promoting education, to enhancing their families and supporting their families across generations, and having those families be the foundation for their futures. And we have many of the same struggles, too. Coming to this country perhaps with limited English ability, and having to find a way to assimilate in and succeed in this country while still retaining what's special and cherished about our ancient cultures and traditions. Throughout the recent history of Los Angeles, these two communities have a long history together as well. My own family immigrate, part of my family immigrated to this country and came to Boyle Heights just after the turn of the 20th century. And the community, the Spanish-speaking and Armenian-speaking communities in those communities were neighbors from the beginning of the 1900s. Our City Hall, Los Angeles City Hall, has a foundation that was built in part by Mexican-American immigrants like Jose Uizar's grandfather, who worked to build City Hall. And the brass doors that are at the main entrance of City Hall were crafted by an Armenian-American immigrant crafts person, Henry Line, who built those beautiful doors. So there's so much that brings us together. But at times in the past, there have also been challenges between our communities. It was about 15 years or so ago, I remember helping to preside over the actual signing of a peace treaty between students at Grant High School, Mexican-American and Armenian-American students, where there had been conflict and where there had been a lack of understanding of one another. And through student leadership there among these groups, we were able to bring them together and understand how much they have in common. And so how far we've come, from the days of signing a peace treaty 15 years ago, to a time when the consuls of these two countries come together and have events at Grant High School in unison, in which these students are all participating. So this is a very special time, I think, for our respective communities. And Ms. Rodriguez, I want to thank you too for especially leading and helping this. I especially want to thank Consul General Garcia de Alba, in our very first meeting together in my office, said, "What can we do to help bring these communities together?" So I appreciate, Mr. Consul General, your commitment to this very much. And it goes without saying, I think, that we owe so much to the now Ambassador of the Republic of Armenia, the former Consul General of Armenia in Los Angeles, who has been a longtime great friend of many of us here. But also, he left us as Consul General here in Los Angeles to become the Armenian Ambassador to Mexico. And so in that role, he played an internationally important role in helping to bring these countries together, two countries, forget about the communities here, two countries that sometimes have not agreed on some very fundamental issues. But because of Consul General and then Ambassador Hovhanisian, that relationship was built much stronger, and I'm very, very proud of the work that he's done in bringing these countries together. And I couldn't be more pleased that we have him here today, the Ambassador of the Republic of Armenia, His Excellency Grigor Hovhanisian.
Thank you very much, Mr. Krikorian, Councilwoman Rodriguez, members of the council, Mr. President, Honorable Consul General, staff of the Armenian and Mexican consulate generals in Los Angeles, absolutely thrilled and pleased to be back in this council, standing before you five years after the last time I appeared here on this wonderful occasion to celebrate the friendship between our communities, the friendship that I was very pleased to be involved in forging many years ago, when we started the first Armenian-Mexican celebration in 2011. Back then, with the Mexican Consul General Gutierrez Gonzalez, who's a big shot, he's a judge in Mexico now, and the then Mexican Ambassador to Washington, Arturo Saruhan, of Armenian descent. So we forged that friendship that I'm very pleased that the current generation of Consul Generals and diplomats in Los Angeles continue to be fostering. From my perspective, as someone who served in Los Angeles and Mexico City and now in Washington, we're absolutely blessed to be enjoying this friendship with the Mexican-American community, with its exuberance, with its generosity, with many, many talents that we enjoy sharing with. So thank you very much for recognizing this friendship. Thank you very much for marking this milestone. The Mexican-Armenian Cultural Week is an important cultural celebration that adds another layer to the multi-ethnic fabric of this great city, which we all love. And I'm absolutely thrilled to be back. Thank you very much.
What a great president. We do have a member on the queue as well.
Okay, we have a couple more speakers, and I want to invite my very dear friend, the Consul General, Carlos Garcia de Alba, to also share some of the programmatic opportunities that are going to be occurring this week. And one of the things that I wanted to include earlier is that among, you know, in addition to what we are going to be celebrating this week during this special cultural week, is that, you know, we've had very unique forging of the Armenian and Latino communities in the northeast San Fernando Valley in my district. And it was reflected through the participation of the Alex Pilibo School, for example, celebrating the lives that were lost during the Armenian Holocaust as part of the seventh district's Dia de los Muertos celebration. There are so many opportunities for us to be great collaborators, and I'm so grateful that we have partners reflected here that are committed to helping to forge these relationships going forward. And I have no greater faith in my dear friend Carlos in helping to continue to facilitate that, and I want to thank you so much for being here with us this morning, and he will share some of the programmatic opportunities that are going to be happening this week.
Buenos dias, Mr. President, Council Monica Rodriguez, Councilmember Paul Krikorian. Ladies and gentlemen, buenos dias, good morning, Badi Jeriko. First of all, I have to say, thank you. We are more than happy to accept this resolution that emphasizes Mexican-Armenian friendship and the great contributions of both our countries and our people through the city of Los Angeles. Thank you so much again to all the councilmembers. For the consulate general of Mexico, it is a privilege to have the opportunity to work together with other consulates on economic, cultural, and artistic events. Last year, for example, as part of the Year of Mexico in Los Angeles, we had the opportunity of collaborating with the consulates of Chile, Dominican Republic, Ecuador, Ireland, Italy, Israel, Poland, Uruguay, Paraguay, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and of course, Armenia. So the Mexican-Armenian Cultural Week that we kick off this morning with the presence of our dear friend Ambassador Hovhanisian, who traveled all the way from Washington, D.C., is the second time that we have the chance to work jointly after the successful business seminar that we organized together last year. In this regard, I want to thank also Consul General Sergei Zarquisov and his very professional team for the wonderful support I personally always have had from them since I came to the beautiful city of Los Angeles one year and seven months ago. A few weeks ago, on January 14th, Armenia and Mexico celebrated the 26th anniversary of the establishment of diplomatic ties. But even though it is just 26 years of formal bilateral links, Armenians have been present in Mexico for almost four centuries. The first Armenian that arrived in Mexico, according to the article "Armenian Community in Mexico," was a man by the name of Francisco Martin, who went to my country in 1632. But the majority of the Armenian population arrived in Mexico between 1910 and 1928. Nowadays, the Armenian community may be small in comparison with other minorities, around 400 or 500, but many of them are prominent artists, business people, scientists, and diplomats. That is the case, just for example, of the famous actress and singer Rosa Gloria Chagoyan, Lola La Trilera, a very dear friend of mine, by the way. Also, the founder of one of the most successful shoe stores ever in Mexico, El Taconazo Papis, Enrique Jamparszumian. Also, the former president of the most relevant university in Latin America, La Universidad Nacional Autónoma de México, La UNAM, and also very distinguished scientist José Sarucán. As well as his son, as the ambassador mentioned, the former ambassador of Mexico to Washington, D.C., Arturo Sarucán. In Los Angeles, by the way, the vice president of a very important TV company is proudly a Mexican-Armenian, Rubén Queozellán. In economic terms, slowly, but bilateral trade has been growing. Mexico buys from Armenia cable boxes, electrical circuits, and parts and accessories for X-ray machines. Mexico's main exports to Armenia include three-wheel motorcycles, coffee, and of course, tequila. So being originally from Jalisco myself, the land of tequila, thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, the relevance of the Armenian community in my country, as well as the growing importance of the bilateral Mexico-Armenia relationship, were the reasons why on April 2015, the Mexican Senate held an Armenian Cultural Week dedicated to Armenian history and to the then 23rd anniversary of the establishment of diplomatic ties. Three years later, it is wonderful to celebrate now in Los Angeles, with the Mexican-Armenian Cultural Week, the links of friendship between our two countries and the vital role that the big and strong Armenian and the Mexican communities play in the city of angels. This is another way to keep building bridges and not barriers between our countries, governments, and people. Again, thank you so much, dear ambassador, dear councilmembers, and to all of you for the privilege of allowing us to work together.
Thank you so much. And I actually, I was remiss in actually acknowledging Arun Ajari, city councilmember. Thank you for being here this morning with us, city councilmember for the city of Glendale. And so at this time, I'm sorry, Mr. President, I know you said you had a speaker.
And before I turn it over to Gil, let me just say that in a time where this country has never been more divisive and divided, and there's so much politically, and there's so much negativity, what a phenomenal presentation this morning. And it couldn't be more ripe and more timely, in fact, perhaps even one would suggest overdue. And I want to thank all of you so much. It was absolutely wonderful, and your remarks were beautiful, and it really strikes a chord into the fabric and nature of not just this country, but probably even more importantly, our local communities here. And I think it speaks to not just who is before us, but all of our ethnicities and backgrounds here in Los Angeles, the most diverse place on the planet. And I want to thank you all for coming together this morning. With that, Councilmember Sadio.
Mr. Krikorian will appreciate this, I'm sure. Let me concur with the President, and let me say to you that I actually stand here as a product of Armenian-Mexican friendship, because the modern Chicano political advances were a product of the friendship of Wally Karabian, who is in many respects the pioneer and in some respects the godfather of Chicano politics. Because it was Wally Karabian, who was the representative, the assembly member from Manabalo and East Los Angeles, who took a young man who was a president of Garfield High School, was working down the street at a jewelry store on Whittier Boulevard, and took him and made him his chief aide. Now, the chief aide of the assembly was like the chief of staff, and it was the track to become an assembly member. And so from launching the career, running his program, raising the funds for Richard Alatore, we emerged with the modern Chicano political movement. From Richard Alatore, he was joined from Manabalo by Art Torres, and they then plucked Tom Calderon, not Tom, Chuck Calderon, to come forward with his aide, his chief aide, Dennis Kazarian. Dennis Kazarian's daughter, Alexis, known as Alex, is an attorney, and she, with Felipe Placencia, are the leaders of the Mexican-American Bar Association PAC, one of the most prominent political organizations within the Mexican-American legal community and known throughout the political area for an organization that is very supportive of many elected officials, not just Mexican-Americans. The PAC plays a prominent role in Latino politics, and Boyle Heights is a place where many of these people have emerged. I grew up there, walking daily past a meat market that my Senate colleague, Chuck Puchigian, his uncle, had this meat market in Boyle Heights. And on my walk to Lorena Avenue School, I would walk by that meat market, and it was a very popular place in our community. So the history of Mexican and Armenian, Mexican-American, Armenian, Chicano, Armenian friendship is long and storied in our community. I consider myself a product of that relationship. It follows from there that many of us who are here are products of that friendship, and we should move forward with that. It's true that these are challenging times, but history matters. It's significant for us to know this history so that we can know that we can go forward in unity, and we can embrace the diversity that is the strength of this city and this nation. Thank you for doing this.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio.
Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to rise and say thank you. Thank you, Mr. Krikorian and Ms. Rodriguez, for celebrating diversity in our city. I think one of the most beautiful things I can say about both of our cultures is that we are rich in family, we are rich in religion, and we make the most amazing food. And I think all of that is surrounded by the love and respect for family and our elders, and it's something that I've always appreciated from the Armenian community. And I just want to say, Mr. Krikorian, thank you for bringing up the ethnic tension that occurred 15 years ago at Grant High School. I remember I was working for the California State Senate, and there was a real sense of what are we going to do to try to get both cultures to understand each other. And I think your leadership was right on. You showed up to the high school. I remember as someone who was simply working for the state, your leadership was welcomed, and I think you were able to bring both cultures together and be able to figure out how we were going to coexist, and I think you've done a fabulous job leading the way. And I can't say enough of my friend Monica. You have done such an amazing, beautiful job in embracing the Armenian culture in your district and making sure that everyone understands that you represent everyone. And I am so proud of you, and I can see how much they love you, and I love how much they love you. And I know you're going to make, just do amazing things embracing both cultures and representing anyone, and I think you're doing a fantastic job. Thank you for representing.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So colleagues, with the adoption of this resolution, the city of Los Angeles hereby declares the week of February 2nd through February 9th, 2018, as Mexican-Armenian Cultural Week to celebrate Mexican-Armenian friendship and their great contributions to our city. Thank you so much. Thank you. I should present to, you come over here. There we go, like this, this would be great. There we go.
Yeah, okay, we have a, we'll go ahead and turn our attention back to the agenda, colleagues. We have item 13 for reconsideration, and then a continuance to February 2nd. So, if we can go ahead and open the roll for reconsideration on item 13. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that's approved. We're going to go ahead and continue that item till February 2nd. And did we need to read something into the record on that?
No, sir. February 7th, Wednesday, continue. Got it.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item, please? Okay, Mr. Shepherd.
Mr. President, I recommend that we reconsider item 26 from Wednesday's agenda. It's Council File Number 17-1335. That item had an amending motion 26A, which we voted on as amended. The item authorized the Bureau of Sanitations to apply and accept financial assistance from the state for the Tillman Advanced Water Purification Facility and Groundwater Replenishment Project. I incorrectly stated that all of the changes in the amending motion were typographical technical corrections. In fact, the third resolution was amended so that the source of funds was specified, and the effective date was also altered, so that it was effective upon the execution of the related financing agreement. Out of an abundance of caution, I recommend we reconsider 26, that we take any public comment, if there is any, and given that we don't have kiosk today, I recommend we allow the speakers to simply comment on 26A if they wish to, and then revote on the item as amended by 26A.
Okay, with that recommendation, we'll go ahead and have that motion on the floor, and it will be moved by Councilmember Blumenfield and seconded by Councilmember Price. And so, with that, we'll go ahead and consider that and open the roll for the reconsideration of that item. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay. And so, are we going to take that item, then? Okay, so we're going to, so that is then before us, and we'll add that to the current agenda, including the multiple agenda items as well. So, if you already had filled-out cards from multiple agenda items, you're free to speak on that item as well. Okay? Okay, on multiple items, Sean Murphy, come on up. You're on item 612, 612, and then the newly considered item as well. And then one minute for general public comment. How you doing, Sean?
Yeah, fine. Sorry to be away from City Council so long. A member of my family was affected by the floods. He kept evacuating, evacuating, evacuating. Things are okay. Item number six, I am against this item. I'll go to item number 12. Item number 12, maybe against, maybe this item. My one minute for general public comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. Mr. Krikorian's doing a wonderful job doing the sidewalks on Oxnard and Laurel Canyon, where I live at. He needs to keep it up, doing a good job. I'd like him to be reelected a third term. I told David Rue, Langisham and Mopark, the streets are cracking like hell. Somebody's going to fall, one day, somebody's going to get a lawsuit on Mr. Rue's office, and he'll be sorry.
All right, thank you very much. Next speaker, Donna. Donna Perman, come on up, on items 9, 10, and the 26. If you wanted to speak on 26, we have you down for 9 and 10. Did you want to speak on 26 as well? Or just 9 and 10?
What numbers did I put? I know 9 and 10.
9 and 10. Those are the two cards you have.
That's right.
Okay, so go ahead and put two minutes on the clock.
Anyway, number nine, this is Donna Perman. Number nine is still a lot of money, pedestrian crosswalk. I don't see why that Hollywood Magdalene's paid, spent $13,000 for a pedestrian crosswalk. That'd be interesting to know why. They're overspending money for, of course, they love anyplace other than the San Fernando Valley, so even with the big talk about Canoga Park. Anyway, that's all, and then on number nine. Number 10, I tried to call that Pinta USA to find out where the money source is, and they won't tell me where the money comes from, that big gift from, $10,000 from Pinta USA to El Grido Celebration. They won't tell me where the money comes from, how taxpayers might ultimately be, so the taxpayers might be ultimately paying the $10,000 for El Grido Celebration. Why do we need to have a donation from Pinta USA? We don't know where they get their money for an event, and it's only for a certain population. I have an idea, the City Council members and the mayor should pay for it. Hey, that sounds like a good idea, doesn't it? $10,000 accommodation, they can pay over a year to pay for the El Grido, and now, since they love that place so much. So, that's that on there. And can I go to public comment now? Okay, so, public comment, basically, I want to say, is we have limited resources over in Los Angeles, and even the state of California, no sanctuary state. And we have limited resources on metro, where reduced fare, they only have so many, they had to make it more difficult for people to be able to get it, because they're trying to overlot, so they made it more difficult, and it's more difficult for housing, especially limited, such an eight, and it's more limited for, we want to give disabled people more limited, if they have limited funds for people to get phones and utilities. We can't just spread it around all over the place. We don't have the resources for everybody to make it a sanctuary state, sanctuary city. Garcetti doesn't get it right. We don't have enough. We, America first!
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And I'm going to ask you, for all the future speakers, you know the rules, too, please don't yell in the microphone, or you're going to go ahead and forfeit your time. All right, so next, Mr. Previn. Items 5, 6, 7, 10, 11, and 26, of course.
Thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn from Studio City, out here in CD2. It's nice to have the council meeting out here. And that was a very touching Mexican-Armenian collaboration celebration. I enjoy it.
Please stick to the items for which you filled out cards, you could save your general public for the general public comment portion.
Right, you're speaking during my time, sir. Item 26 was the one that you amended on the floor, and your staff has not produced an amendment. It is item 26 from Wednesday. It's a $460 million California State Water Resources Control Board Water Recycling Funding Program. So, it's a tremendous amount of money. And whereas FOBO was very kind to disclose that the effective date and the source of the funding had been amended, we can't see what the amendment is. So, if somebody could produce that document, it would be helpful just for transparency. Now, for item, let me just say about Lamar, that they do an outstanding job. And at 1901 Highland Boulevard, we have bumped up, we're getting a little more for a city property where they're putting a junior little poster, but it's only 2,000 more a year, and it raises the question, what are the reasonable rates on this that? Because this is Lamar, the same Lamar that put 16 grand into the mayor's campaign, just like that, and helped Mr. Krikorian. They're very helpful. They're very, very helpful guys when it comes to putting billboards of you guys up. So, we appreciate it. Item 11, sir, is Jamie McBride. Now, this is a guy, sort of a hero in a way, LAPD guy, who sued the LAPD for a million dollars in pain and suffering, and 500,000 for something worse, because, and won, and now we're just topping off with an extra 23 grand. This is a guy who was retaliated against by the LAPD. I mean, I think I got it right, that Malinowski, who is, I think, Charlie Beck's chief guy, you know, this is not a good one for the home team, sir, obviously, but we settled it up, and he works now for the LAPD's union, and I, you know, I just don't know when it ends, but evidently, it's going to end. I mean, even Villegas in the Valley was involved. They were retaliating against the guy, I guess he was refusing to participate in signing something that he felt was inappropriate. So, when we looked into it, and FOBO was helpful, $40 million over 10 years in LAPD retaliation alone, that's not including all the other nasty things that happened. So, it is something that we look forward to working with Mr. McNicholas and McNicholas at fixing, as opposed to leaving the door open over and over again. Now, as regards to item 6, 7, and number 5, obviously, Corretts is pleased that we haven't talked about the fire too much, because the entire world is talking about the origin of that fire, and it is very irksome, because the details remain out of focus for members of the public who are paying any attention whatsoever. And so, for that reason, sir, we are going to be directing your attention to more about that very, very soon. Item number 10, I will say, is Pinta USA is helping out by plunking a little 10 grand into the El Grido Celebration, and we certainly appreciate it. I know that the city is benefiting from these kinds of celebrations, but when we take money onboard just like that, it raises questions about...
Thank you very much. So, next, we've, oh, you've got your one minute for general public comment, yes.
Right, thank you, sir. Don't try to shortchange, shortchange.
I wouldn't try to change you, we didn't start the clock yet.
No, it's not appropriate. I agree. Let's move forward. Sir, neighborhood councils are terrific. I mean, they provide an opportunity, as Blumenfield pointed out with that very nice presentation this morning, they're an opportunity for members of the public who had no idea to suddenly get involved and be active and participate. And I, too, am a little guilty of that, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself now. I would just simply ask Mr. Krikorian's group in CD2, who are doing an outstanding job of stitching together a series of preferential parking district possibilities, make public for those who will be impacted, the stakeholders who will not be able to park anymore, the employees, the consumers. This is something that we've seen citywide, but in Studio City, we have not indulged it, because we know that we want a vibrant Ventura Boulevard. So, I've asked CD2, who are very, very helpful, Matt Hale, he's not here right now, but he's going to be here soon, and he's going to provide a map with clarification about what the rules are, and then we're going to share it with everybody with a small budget provided by Irene Ibrnesean, and we're going to move forward. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Sir Walsh. John, on items 5, 10, 12, 26, and for whatever reason, you've got two cards for general public comment. So, we'll give you one minute on that.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or at J. Walsh Confidential, and tweeting at Hollywood Dems. And number five, the wildfire that burned in excess of 6,500 acres, it looks like we may be sued, and continues to persist with the City of Los Angeles, and what the meaning of that is. This is a very important issue, and I'm sure you're not going to talk about it at all due to the wildfire that burned 475 acres. But in any case...
Excuse me, Mr. Walsh.
Yeah.
Mr. Herman, if you're going to continue to make any animal sounds, then we're going to ask you to leave, and either you or Spindler, thank you. All right, go ahead, Mr. Walsh.
Okay, and number 10, council action regarding El Grido Celebration to accept a donation. Doesn't say, oh, $10,000, we'll take it. Okay, now, let's go to, right in 5, 10, 16. I'd like to, at this point, go into public, a general public comment. Guess what? You have no police chief. Now, police chiefs, this is the way you resign. You let people know, you let the mayor know, you let the city council know, and you just gracefully leave. This man, this city count, this police chief, he just packed up and got his ass out. And was that a big banner story in The Times? No, it wasn't a big banner story in The Times. We're supposed to just accept the fact, why did the mayor of the City of Los Angeles just accept? I mean, there's something dirty going on here, something filthy, dirty, when the mayor, when the police chief just disappears. His ass is grass. He's gone.
All right, thank you very much. Miriam? 9 and 10?
Public comment.
You already had public comments, so Miriam?
I did not. I didn't have one, Donna did.
Yeah, in public comment, of course, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, 9 and 10. Ladies and gentlemen, it's how the city is spending the money. Like, on the city streets, we have a lot of broken streets, cracked streets, streets that are going, I mean, bucking, buckling, and we need to spend the money where we need to have it done, not just having sanctuary cities, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, so, I see a lot of this occurring throughout the city, and it's, and there's a lot of corruption behind it, and it should be done correctly, and done physically right. So, I'm just letting you know that we're getting the short end of the stick, the taxpayers here, and there's going to be a taxpayers revolt. Obviously, you're trying to do that in November on Prop 13. We're not going to allow that to happen, okay? So, we know that you're taxing the people for this, and it's just not right to take our money and then not get the right bids. I like President Trump's idea. Why wait 10 years to get something done when you can get it done right now, okay? And get it done below budget. Ladies and gentlemen, we can, we put on budget and done right on this issue. Let's go on to the next issue, number 10. Okay, can you start my clock from number 2, the second, yeah, number 10?
It's already going, so.
Okay. Okay, this one here is regarding the, helping us with the USA El Grido Celebration. Again, ladies and gentlemen, that can be done with, you know, simply the people can spend the money themselves and not asking taxpayers to foot the bill. Okay, simple as that. And, you know, this is not going to go very far, because once the people run out of money, the government... Okay, public comment.
Okay, one minute for general public comment.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I like the approach that President Trump did in his Soto, because the fact is, if we want peace and love in this country, and bring the country together, and make America great again, we have to do what we have to do, and I'm hoping that the DACA people will come onboard and join us, Americans. And, all Americans, exactly. One, Americans first. So, we need to do, that's, but Americans, they have to be Americans.
Candido, don't help her out on this.
Okay, make America great, okay, be American first. America first. So, what we want to do is make them realize, if they want to stay in this country and be part of our country, then they need to really show, demonstrate that. So, I appreciate that he would, that he's done this, and I support him 1,000 percent, and we need to get rid of sanctuary states then, okay? Because this is what he's doing. He's compromising, and I want the left to do the same. They need to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so the next speaker, Janine Peterson? Come on up. This is one minute for general public comment.
Not long enough. Thank you. I'm Janine Peterson. I live in Reseda, 91335. Thank you, I'm Janine Peterson, I live in Reseda, 91335. Bob Bloomingfield is my councilman, and this is my neighbor, Wendy. I basically wanted to thank Bob and city council for as much work as possible being done on the homeless issue. And that happened to us in, on our street last year, two years ago, starting, with a meth house being closed down and the residents moving onto the street. So, first time, we had a homeless encampment right up the street, and Bob's office sent out social services. I was talking to the homeless folks every day, who were addicted to meth, and, you know, we know those things are ongoing, they're also dealing meth, and Bob's office really assisted in best as we could. The ultimate story of that lady was she had a stroke, ended up in the hospital, half-dead, and ended up back on the streets with the whole right side paralyzed. So, I followed up, but I also follow up with— Is that it?
Yeah, 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 that's it. Just quickly.
It's not enough time for a public comment.
Sure.
It's a separate issue.
We really can't, but we do have another—
I represent the resistance to the Trump [inaudible].
Thank you very much. So, the next speaker is Woodland Hills, we have the Woodland Hills Warner Center Neighborhood Council, thank you, ma'am, the Woodland Hills Warner Center Neighborhood Council member.
Good morning, council members, I'm Heath Klein, and I'm the treasurer of the Woodland Hills Warner Center Neighborhood Council, future home of Amazon, thanks to Bob and the leadership that the rest of the council's gonna show here. I'd like to comment that I think most of us saw Congressman Joe Kennedy's rebuttal to the State of the Union address, and in it, he said, "Build a wall, and my city, my generation will tear it down." Well, in the interim, my city, our city, should leave a gaping hole in that wall. I've had the privilege of knowing and employing and volunteering alongside of dreamers, first-generation people that came here like our parents, grandparents did, and like Corinne Ho, who it's so fitting that we're honoring today, she is fabulous, you cut her bio way too short. They're what revitalize and make this country great. Do I get extra time?
No, unfortunately, but that's it. Thank you, thank you very much, thanks for being here. Candido?
As my family's native American, in 1598, we arrived here. You're an immigrant.
All right, Candido, come on, come on, come on.
Thank you.
Hey, oh, Candido, we have you, we do have you on item eleven, and then general public comment. So, one minute for item eleven, and then general public comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, with me are the Orhez, Senior Orhe and Junior Orhe. These are individuals who are always working in Van Nuys, trying to help us increase and improve the quality of life here. Mr. President, item eleven is about liability. You know, it's funny that we go out and we pay out a lot of money for these cases, but, you know, we have a situation here in Van Nuys, and Ms. Martinez, I want to address this to you. On the neighborhood council, we have witnessed, as a board member has assaulted two other board members, and nothing has been done about that. Now, the three of us, if it had been one of us, we'd be gone already, they would already file charges against us, but nothing has taken place on this. So, when we talk about liability, there are ways that we could prevent them by doing things when they're reported to you folks and to the authorities. As far as the assaults, Ms. Martinez, you know, you and I don't really get along, nothing, we aren't enemies. This is my second half, but I really admire you for the work that you've done as far as assault—
Now's your time for general public comment.
Yes, as far as the assault issues, and so, I hope you can continue that, whether sexual assault, verbal assault, or physical assault, it needs to stop, and nobody has a right to put their hands on anybody else. Secondly, the medium, it's a small thing, but your staff has cleaned up Van Nuys Boulevard, the area's looking fantastic, and again, we're only limited by our own words, and we're here just to say, we want to be part of this city, we are part of this city. And again, as I said about the nice lady behind me, she says she came in 1863, my family is Native American, and 1598, the first settlers of Albuquerque. We're all Americans, we're all Americans, whether you arrived yesterday or today, if you fight for the American dream, if you pass the American dream on to the next person, you're an American. When you deny that dream, you are not American, that is un-American. Not to pass the American dream.
Thank you, Candido. Always good to see you, brother. All right. Okay, so, if you're gonna yell out again and disrupt this meeting, you're gonna be asked to leave. So, that'll be your fair and final warning, so, please, come on, know the rules. Mr. Gus, item six, and then general public comment.
Morning, council members. On item number six, you have continued to deny what the actual emergency is. You talk extensively about the fire being the emergency. That is the consequence of the emergency. The emergency is your and Mayor Garcetti's failure to address homelessness. It was a homeless encampment that started these fires. You were aware of it. Mr. Coretts in particular, Mr. Bonin in particular, did nothing to stop homeless encampment fires. That is the emergency. The fire is the consequence. The emergency is why two fifteenths of the LA City Council didn't stop it, and you have yet to make that an agenda item. Why didn't you stop it before it happened? That's the emergency, a crisis of leadership failing to prevent the fire. General public comment. The idiot comment of the day goes to Councilmember Mitchell Farrell. You had a child shooting children yesterday, and he gets up here today and has the temerity to say, "Crisis averted." Crisis averted? You have children in the hospital. How is that crisis averted? That is the boneheaded comment of the day. Mr. Wesson or his family members employed by city council, I'm working on a story about a family property owned by your family, I'm giving you a chance to speak on the record before I write on it. Mr. Wesson knows that when I write about him and finance, it's the truth, and it's picked up by The Times. Mr. Wesson, I'm giving you a chance to comment on this. It's an embarrassing story about a piece of LA property owned by your family. Mr. Sadio talked about a transgender murder the other day, and he said it was an immigration issue. My God. And no kill. Congratulations for saying that LA is no kill, there's no need to adopt anymore, you can turn in your animals and go buy a puppy. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Jessica, LEUSD Healthy Start, Jessica. One minute for general public comment.
Oh, thank you. I'm here to congratulate Corinne Ho. She's an amazing woman in our Canoga Park area, and without her, I don't know, I wouldn't be here. So, I love you from the bottom of my heart, you are an amazing woman, and I want to thank, thank you for all your hard work that you do all the time. I just want to come and say that, thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Spindler, multiple items, item six, seven, nine, and ten, twelve—
Right, signed up for everything, and I told you about the Brown Act. Go ahead.
Yeah, man, this is like fucking cool, y'all. So, I get down here to talk about some of this local corruption shit, you know?
You stick to the items, or go ahead and go right into general public comment if you'd like?
That's what this, he's a new puppet.
So, I talk about number six. See, number six, me and my methamphetamine addicts, y'all, we go ahead, and we've been camping up there in the hills with all those rich motherfuckers up there, like Skirball Center, and all that other shit up there, Getty Center and everything, and when we're camping, y'all, we like, like, make our own little fires to, you know, to warm up our water and cook our shit, you know, but we're homeless, man, and we're on methamphetamine, y'all, and that's why we doing all that shit. So, I don't know why you getting all the low on us, hoe. I don't know why you doing all of that encampment dough, because we don't have the dough, y'all, to get ourselves housing, and that's a local emergency, you see? Now, we need motherfucking white motherfuckers to give us housing, or we're gonna be here in the hills, all to time, burning down every motherfucking hill, because we're gonna get our goddamn housing, or we're gonna burn your white motherfuckers out by accidents like what happened at Skirball Center. And I notified, well, my friend here will tell you about that. Oh, yes, thank you to my colleague, I've notified several insurance policy carriers that pursuant to state law, and the council in the city being a municipal corporation knowingly allowing homeless encampments, that they may recover all of the insurance losses on the Skirball Center fire against the municipal corporation of the city of Los Angeles. Why? Because of an ultra-hazardous and dangerous condition known to the city under the government code, that's why. I've been at the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council, I've been to this council, I've been to Plum. What have I been saying the last year? You have homeless encampments that are not being removed, and there's a fire danger, I have smelled smoke in the Sepulveda Basin, and Nury to this day does nothing. Yesterday, they were burning stuff right off of Burbank Boulevard and Woodley, and there's no cops. So, again, every single person that suffered a loss, contact your insurance company and file a lawsuit against the city of Los Angeles for every dollar, including punitive damages, under the government code, they are not immune. You started that fire, you knew it was gonna happen, and it was foreseeable it was gonna happen, and that son of a bitch going up to the top knows that, and next is gonna be the fire in the Sepulveda Basin, if you don't clean those goddamn encampments up right now. Oh, I'm sorry, I mean, I was trying to be a puppet show. First, let's bring back video conferencing. See, look at the quiet faces. What do you think I'm doing? I've been an attorney for 23 years, do you think I jack myself off in my fucking office? I've been reading, I've been in jail, I've been writing my memoirs, people. February 2017, I wanted $425,000 to settle everything, and you told me to go fuck myself, and you went over to Van Nuys Court and prosecuted me. Well, I have good news for you. One of my clients, a deportable alien in custody, went to the same court in Van Nuys, I had a little talkie, and we had an immigration judge give him his green card back. A material witness said, "What?" Because he was put in front of the same judge as me, that tried to have me arrested and put in jail for a year. You know what I'm gonna say to you fucking council members? Ta-ta assholes.
Thank you very much. Gary, foresight, Gary, on general public comment?
Thank you. I'm so pleased that Jessica from Canoga Park Neighborhood Council, the secretary, opened the subject back up on Corinne Ho. I had wanted so much to add some things that were not mentioned. I had the privilege of serving with, engaged with Corinne Ho on the Congress of Neighborhood Councils. She was the moderator, I was on the panel on spending taxpayer dollars. We've, together, are attending Civic U 2.0, and we selected the group on homelessness, so, we're engaged on that. And then, last night, we attended the, actually, two nights ago, we're on the funding metrics, Funding Equity Working Group, not metrics, equity. This isn't about so much that I'm with her on this, but I've had the privilege of working with her, and it's very, very exciting to do that. If I could just have one moment?
Can't, I gotta keep it all equal for everyone, but so, thank you very much, thanks for being here, Gary. Herman, multiple items, I believe you filled a card for every item, so go ahead and speak to every item during your multiple public comment cards.
So, you heard all the fires were started? Fires were started because there were no homes for the homeless. One point billion dollars gutted by the taxpayers and the American people, and you created a fire hazard. Why do you have to create this fire hazard, when you know that homeless people need housing? What the fuck's wrong with you people in this horseshoe here? I'll tell you what the fuck's wrong with you. You don't respect the American people. You do not. And for that reason, American people are fucking sick and tired of living on the streets, so they have to put a fire up. Unfortunately, the fire burns mountains, burns your homes, and I hope all the people listening, you in the video, listening, sue these motherfuckers and let them learn how to check and balance their so-called budget. And then, I go into item nine, pedestrian-related infrastructure. Well, what did Trump say about the infrastructure? He said, "We must improve it immediately and spend trillions in dollars to fix the fuck-up idea of what the Democrats did for years." Sit on your ass with a thumb up one side. And then, I go into item 10, 'cause I only get two fucking minutes. Pinta USA, let's give El Grito to the Armenians. Genocide never happened. The Turks kicked your ass.
And we're off topic, Mr. President.
Let me go back and connect—
Off topic, and, no, so, go ahead and start, there's one minute for general public comment, one minute for general public comment.
Oh, so, now the motherfucker don't let me speak on my items. So, the results of human rights and inordinance, and the threat by the shithole councilman in the 12th District with the big ears, small sleeves, and a little dick, who harasses women, pussy wants to pick on me on my time. Violation of the Bay Act, violation of the Ralph M. Brown Act, you stupid fuck. And I'm talking about Martinez, who came from Mexico, talking about what? Human rights ordinance? I'll tell you about human rights ordinance, 18/0086. Fuck you fucking Jews for coming into my country, saying that you prohibit discrimination, prejudice, intolerance, and bigotry. Well, the biggest bigotry is Los Angeles. Stupid white-collar niggers like you, Mr. Attorney, who can't follow the rules of conduct and ethical bounds. My civil rights were violated, fuck all of you. 42 USC, 1983, and I hope you shove it up your fat brown ass, Nury.
All right, thank you. Clearly, it's been a week of no med, so, thanks for being here again. For those of you who've never been to experience general public comment, welcome to your Los Angeles City Council. All right, Herman, you've already been warned, so go ahead and remove Herman for once, thank you very much, you disrupted this meeting for the last time. I'm sorry, you've been warned. So, sergeants, please escort him out. Mr. Kocorian.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, just for the sake of the record—
Wait a second, can we make sure his microphone's on, please?
Yeah, for the sake of the record, Mr. President, throughout the time that we were all trying to pay—
They're still, excuse me, they're still disrupting the meeting, as well as Mr. Spindler, go ahead and escort him out, too, please.
And actually, I was unable to hear the council member because of the goat noise going on through the—
So, Mr. Spindler, goodbye. Mr. Spindler, goodbye. Goodbye. Escort him out.
And, and just in case the—
Escort him out, please.
—microphones in Van Nuys aren't picking it up, we've got—
Hold on a minute. Goodbye.
They're shouting as they leave, disrupting the meeting, as usual.
Excuse me. You're still disrupting this meeting? Please escort him out of the building, as he's yelling in the hallways as well. He will not disrupt the rest of this meeting. And as much as it might be general public comment, and we have a lot of latitude, and we allow a lot, more than we probably should, I think we need an opinion on what crosses the line to hate speech as well, because while speech and freedom of speech is certainly free to do so, there are legal limitations as well. And so, we've gotten some complaints, not only from the general public that's here today about that, but also from staff. And while we shall subject ourselves to that, have signed up for it, and have been elected to do so, staff necessarily hasn't. And there are rules and laws to protect staff, and so, we'd like the city attorney to report back on at least, not decorum, per se, but what speech with a limitation can be allowed if it hinges on hate speech during public comment. Mr. Kocorian.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. President, and consistent, consistent with the thought that you just expressed. I'd also like to point out that general pub, even general public comment, needs to be on topics that are within the jurisdiction of this council to act upon. And personal attacks on people's appearance, people's bodies, in some cases, these same speakers have gone to our Commission on Disabilities and mocked commissioners' disabilities. They have gone to neighborhood councils and any number of different city agencies to simply personally attack people without any discussion— personally attack people without any discussion of anything within the jurisdiction of that body whatsoever. And I would contend, and as long as you're asking for these opinions from the city attorney, I would contend that those sorts of attacks are inherently outside of the jurisdiction of this agency and therefore should be excluded. Second point I wanted to make is, it's one thing for them to disrespect us, but throughout the time that other public speakers were speaking, Mr. Spindler in particular and Mr. Herman continue to make the noises from the audience that make it harder for us to hear the members of the public who take time out of their schedule to come and speak with us. So again, none of this gets picked up on the microphones. So when people watch from home, it isn't necessarily clear, but it's very clear to us when we try to pay attention to the people who are speaking, and we're hearing these noises from the side that distract our attention, it's not fair to the members of the public who come here to speak, and it must stop.
And may I just add also, sometimes there's constant movement and gesticulation, which from our end of the horseshoe makes it difficult not to be distracted, and it's an obvious attempt to draw attention to them away from the speaker we should be paying attention to.
And I will close with, on those comments, if we could ask the city attorney's office to come back to us next week with some guidelines onto what is under the purview of this council as it pertains to public comment and what we shall and shall not allow. But with that too, yes, Mr. O'Farrell?
Just a visa v. through the harassment law. The state law on harassment in a public workplace, or a private workplace for that matter, Mr. President, if they could, city attorney's office could also, Mr. Englander, report back on the state law regarding harassment in the workplace.
Great. No, please, yes, please add that as well. And to all my colleagues on this, when somebody is disrupting the meeting and you can hear it or physically see it, it's not always visible as you're conducting the meetings from up here. And in fact, there's a lot of paperwork and other things going on distracting to keep the meeting flowing and stick to the agenda. So if at any time, please do not wait for the council president or whoever's running the meeting to stand up, ask for the clock to be stopped during anybody speaking, and point out to us the disruption. It's incumbent upon all of us to recognize that as it's happening and not after the meeting. So I appreciate all your help and guidance on that as well. With that, we're going to go ahead and turn our attention back to the agenda. We're going to go ahead and take items up, number five, six, seven, nine, 10, 11, and 12. So those items are before us, colleagues. We'll go ahead and open the roll on those items. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
And then item number 26, we'll go ahead and vote, and that was from, again, last Wednesday's meeting, and we'll vote as amended. Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, I believe we have motions for posting and referral. We'll go ahead and post and refer those now, or do we have any announcements before us? Seeing none, do we have any adjourning motions? We do. So we're going to ask everybody in chambers to please rise for adjourning motions. Thank you. Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our Department of Cultural Affairs lost a very important employee emeritus recently and asked me to make sure that we share his life and his memory for all. It is with great sadness that I ask that we adjourn today's meeting in memory of Dr. Earl F. Sherburne. Dr. Sherburne was born and grew up in Ohio. He was a graduate of the University of Michigan and received his Doctor of Musical Arts degree from the University of Southern California. He was the former band director at Palmdale High School and served on the Palmdale City Council. From March of 1986 through September of 2000, Dr. Sherburne was an employee of the City of Los Angeles Department of Cultural Affairs, serving in the capacities of Art Center Director and the McGraw-Tei and Lancashire Arts Centers and as the first community arts director. Dr. Sherburne passed away on December 30, 2017, in Las Vegas. A celebration of life services will be held at the Center for Spiritual Living, Greater Las Vegas on Saturday, that's tomorrow, the 3rd, at 2:00 p.m. Mr. Sherburne is survived by sisters Marilyn Merkel and Jay Sherburne, nieces and nephews, and sorrowing friends and colleagues in the Department of Cultural Affairs. May he rest in peace.
From all of us, thank you very much for that. Looking to continue to look to my right, Mr. Coretz.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's with heartfelt sorrow that we adjourn in the memory of Rabbi Isaiah Zeldin. He was the founding dean of the California School of Hebrew Union College, the founder of the Milken Community School, and founder of Stephen S. Weiss, one of the largest reform synagogues in the country. In 1964, Rabbi Zeldin parted ways with his previous congregation over his opposition to Proposition 14, a measure put forward to halt fair housing. He took 35 families and founded Stephen S. Weiss Temple, now an 18-acre mountain site located between the city's two largest Jewish population centers, the west side and the San Fernando Valley, on the eastern slope of the Sepulveda Pass. When Stephen S. Weiss Temple began, they had no money, no budget, and no building, and services were held in a church, and Rabbi Zeldin didn't take a salary for the first year. That was the beginning of what eventually would become one of the largest reform congregations in the United States with a several-acre sprawling campus. At his funeral, there are many stories about Rabbi Zeldin as a man with an incredible mind. He was a brilliant public speaker who never, ever used notes. He was also a pioneer in the creation of one of the first education systems in the reform movement. Against all odds, he established a K through 12 group of schools that continues to excel to this day. One of the core missions of that school is that no child would ever be turned away for a lack of funds, and my staff member, Jeff Ebenstein, was a fortunate recipient of the extensive scholarship program they have there and can't say enough about the good education that he received at Milken High School. And as the son of a widowed mother, he couldn't have attended otherwise. To this day, the thriving congregation and the school system, which now numbers some 4,800 members and students, continues to be a great success to this day. The congregation is guided by five rabbis and two cantors. Rabbi Zeldin retired as the senior rabbi at Stephen S. Weiss Temple in 1990, but remained actively involved with the congregation throughout his life. His wife of 68 years, Florence, died in 2012. And despite being one of the most accomplished Jewish community leaders in the country, he was more proud of his children and grandchildren and their accomplishments than his own. Rabbi Zeldin died of natural causes, and he had set a goal of living to 100, which he almost made. He died at 97 years old, and may he rest in peace.
All right. Thank you very much. Continuing to look to my right, seeing no other adjourning motions, and looking to my left, seeing none. We're not adjourned yet. I want to check in with the clerk. I know there was some work to be done to circulate. We're good there. There was a card that was entered in earlier as well. We apparently had a card that was filled out for general public comment. It was filed under an item number instead of general public comment, so it was not called because that item was already held, but this was for general public comment. So if you want to come on up, Jerry? So you have one minute, please.
Thank you. I can do this in 25 seconds. I want to thank the city council for all the good works they do, and I apologize for being 45 minutes late. And Mitchell Englander, thank you for coming to Granada Hills South Emergency Preparedness Town Hall. He interrupted me. Senator Hertzberg's staff interrupted me, but it's a pleasure to be interrupted by the best city councilman. Thank you, Mitch.
Well, I'm glad I got your card in. All right. So with that, with that, colleagues, that was not planned. That was not planned. Although, 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 that's the second time, that's the, she can rebuttal. That's the second time that's happened here in these valley chambers. So with that, colleagues, have a wonderful weekend and be safe. Thank you.